Hi everyone, thank you so much for attending tonight. I wanted to welcome you all to the 2025 Bristol School Bristol School Board Candidate Forum. The Bristol PTO is pleased to host this event virtually again this year for the community and the candidates. The purpose of this forum is to learn more about the candidates and understand why it is important to each of them. If you don't know me yet, my name is Stephanie Rembalski and I'm the newest PTO present here at Bristol. I am so excited to continue being part of this amazing organization we have at Bristol. The mission of the Bristol Schools PTO is to develop a closer connection between home and school by encouraging parents' involvement, enhancing the educational experience by supporting academic and enrichment activities, and improving the environment at Bristol School by providing volunteer and financial support. Before we begin, I just wanted to walk through the form a little bit and how about the participants tonight. All four candidates were invited to participate in the forum and were emailed the six questions they will be asked tonight. Only two candidates accepted to participate tonight. We have Paige Sefton and we have Abigail Stanislavski, which you will hear from tonight. The other two candidates, Tina Elferin and Victor Nightingale, is trying to participate. New this year, we will have a moderator who will handle the questions for each candidate. Her name is Courtney Courtney Coats, sorry about that. She is based in Antioch with no ties to Bristol School or either of the candidates. She was also selected for her warm personality and passion for speaking and moderating events. We are very excited to have her be part of the forum tonight, so thank you. We will start with introduction by the candidates. They will be timed a limit for about three to five minutes. Following that, we will have questions to each candidate. They will have two minutes to answer each question. After that is finished, we will have closing remarks by the candidates. They can talk about anything that they didn't get to in the questions or anything more they wanted to add to let the community know about. They'll have about five minutes each for that. We'll go back and forth on who is going first and then we'll just move on from there. The forum is being recorded. If you have to hop off early or if you wanted to share this link with anybody, we will get this recorded session up on the PTO, the Bristol PTO page. We'll send it to Bristol School. We'll try to get it out everywhere as much as possible, but you will be able to hear the recording post the event as well. So I will let Courtney take it over from here to start the forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. So good night or good evening, everyone. So let's begin with you, Paige, if you wouldn't mind giving us a quick introduction about yourself and telling us about you.
Thanks Courtney. Thanks Stephanie. Congratulations, by the way, on your new president status and welcome to the PTO. So yeah, my name is Paige Sefton. Many of you might remember me if you've tuned into these candidate forums before because I was actually in Courtney's seat and I did the moderation for the last two years. So it's interesting for me to be on this side of things. So I live in Kenosha, however, it's over by Strawberry Creek, so kind of on the Bristol border. I was born and raised in Illinois, believe it or not. I don't know that a lot of people know that about me, but I moved up to Wisconsin at an early age because I had so many friends up here and I just love the community feeling up here. It's not more welcoming as far as I'm concerned and I've always been a Packer fan, so I wanted to live in Wisconsin. I have worked in corporate for my, pretty much my entire career with the exception of Six Flags Great America, which was probably my favorite place to work. But no, I've worked at Abbott and AV. I worked there for over 22 years and I'm now at Mondelez International, better known as the Oreo Company. I've been at Mondelez for about nine years now. All of the roles I've been in have been very people focused. Many of those years, probably over 20 of those years, have been in leadership roles as well, where I've been working with leaders, coaching leaders, things like communication, change management, learning and development. I've always just been very passionate about people, probably because my college degree is in psychology. I have a psych business and management major from Bear College of DePaul University. And I actually got my degree as I was working. So yeah, I've always been a huge proponent of education, whether it be adults or children. So when I did come into the Bristol community, my daughter, I have one daughter, married by the way to Chris Manning. My daughter is Eleanor Manning or Nora. Nora went to Bristol School from first grade through eighth, graduated last year and is now at Central. But I wanted to jump in right away and get involved in the Bristol community and Bristol School, jumped into the PTA back in the day, volunteered, also kind of worked my way up to vice president and president status eventually. And I'm super proud of the fact that I was a part of the team that actually transitioned the PTA into a PTO, which is a far better organization for a school like Bristol. So really proud of that and of the team of people that I worked with on that one. So let me see what else I wanted to say here. So I, like I said, corporate, I don't have an education background, but I do think that my corporate experience has really served me well in terms of being able to work with many different types of people, senior leaders in the C-suite, all the way down to just your normal workers. I've managed multimillion dollar budgets in corporate, but I know that's a very different thing than being involved in the school. Can't run a school like you run a business. It's, you know, there's some similar qualities there, but you really do have to understand the uniqueness of school and of school funding and all of that. I do have a lot to learn, I will admit, but I am really, really passionate about it and very willing to learn. And I'm a fast learner as well. My hobbies, just a little bit more about me outdoors, I love outdoor stuff. I work out a lot. I love music. I'm an animal lover. Love hanging out with my family, making food, injuring ourselves. My daughter's on the central dance team and so I'm now becoming a central mom too. So really excited to be here. That's a little bit about me and I'm sure you'll hear more as we answer our questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Paige. Abigail?
Yeah. Thank you Courtney for moderating tonight and thank you Stephanie for the invitation to participate in this. So I'm Abigail Stanislavski. I am a Bristol mom of two students. I have a sixth grader and a fourth grader. And my husband and I met when we were at Carthage and we, as soon as we got married, we moved to Illinois. And once we had our kids, we decided that we really wanted to make a move back into Wisconsin for the schools particularly. And Bristol was one of our top choices. So we were very fortunate enough to find a house in the area. And our kiddos started at Bristol in the middle of the pandemic in 2020. And so that was a really interesting time for our students, our children to start in a new school. And I was impressed from day one. Our kids felt welcome. They made friends. The teachers were so supportive of the transition from another school. And it was something that as a parent you're concerned about. So just the welcoming atmosphere of the school has always been impressive to me. Just professionally, I am a public school educator. I have been for my entire career. I am very proud to be a public school educator. I am an advocate for public schools and I think that our communities are stronger when we have strong public schools. And I believe that Bristol is one of those schools and our community is strong because our school is strong. And I want to continue moving that forward to grow even more. So my role is to be an instructional or an instructional coach at a middle school. And so I spend a lot of time working with teachers and talking about high quality instruction and really knowing what good educational practices are. And I feel like that's one of my biggest strengths of what I can bring to Bristol and particularly the school board is my educational background. I do have two master's degrees, one in professional development and another one in educational administration and leadership. And I just feel like all of those experiences, both professional and educationally, bring me to a unique perspective that hasn't been on the board in a few years. We've had educators in the past that I feel like brought a lot with their backgrounds and I feel like I can add that back in. I just feel really passionately about Bristol School and I want to see it grow and flourish. And so I'm really motivated to make great choices and put policies in place that really support our students, make a big impact on them and their educational experience, and do things that support the teachers so that they can give our students that high quality education that they deserve, so that they can be competitive as they move on to Central and as they move into the community as a whole. We want them to flourish. We want them to come back and be leaders and change makers. So that's what I stand for. I want Bristol to become, to continue to be that place where students can thrive and grow into those future leaders.
Wonderful. Thank you both for those introductions. We'll move right into the six questions we have for you and Abigail, we'll start with you. So the question is, what do you understand the role of a school board member to be? And what would be your education priorities?
Yeah, so I think the first and biggest piece of being a school board member is understanding that you are one member of an entire board and that the board needs to work as a unit. So while we all bring a variety of experiences and perspectives, we all could add something to that conversation to make, to work collaboratively and move the school into a great, into a great position and set everyone up for success. So a school board doesn't manage the day-to-day operations. They create the policies, they revise the policies, they provide this overall guidance to the administrators. And then you entrust the administrators, who you hire, who you evaluate, to put those policies into practice and really decide how those things get put to work. So really trusting as a board that you've made a good decision about who your administrator is and then making sure that you've set up really strong policies and then just monitoring it and making sure that the students are doing well, that they're thriving in the setting. So of course, my priorities are also always going to be student centered and based on educational research. I know what best practices are. If I don't, I will do the work to find them. And I want to make sure that every policy decision we make focuses on the kids and making sure that they have the best experience at Bristol. And that means also putting our teachers in a place where they can do the job that they were trained to do. Every teacher has been trained to teach. And so we have to stand back and trust that they will do their job well and that the administrators will monitor that the teachers are doing their job well. So that's going to be my, that's my belief of the role of the school board member and then what would be our priorities as we move forward.
Thank you. Paige, I'll rephrase the question again so we can hear it. What do you understand the role of a school board member to be and what would be your education priorities?
So in the simplest terms, a school board really dictates the what is done in a school and the administrators and staff dictate the how. And I think that's just a slightly different way to say what Abigail was saying. But I, like Abigail, I trust the professionalism and expertise of the teachers and the entire staff at Bristol. They are a phenomenal crew. I know many of them deeply from my expertise and my experience with the PTO. We trust them to do their day-to-day jobs and to really educate our children the way that they need to. I would hope that if they need help or if they need guidance or if they're running into some sort of problem or issue, they will come to the board. I do understand from some people who have reached out to me personally that they feel right now that they can't approach the board for certain reasons. And I really want to be the type of board and board member that they can come to. They can share their concerns with, they can know that their voices will be heard. So my priorities in that sense are to really understand what, where we're at with our curriculum. That's one thing that I know has come up a few times lately. The need to update some of our curriculum is very, very important to me. I think we have to keep that current. We have to understand what the teachers feel are best and we have to understand what the parents feel are best as well. So I understand that there is, right now, there is the potential for a teacher union to potentially be voted on. I think the board needs to understand why that's happening. And if it does happen, I do think the board needs to dig into that and understand. I don't know that we've ever had, at least recently, a situation where we've had a teachers' union in partnership with the board. So I do think that's going to be really, really important for all of the board members to understand and to truly be able to partner and support each other in terms of that. So that would be a huge priority for me. I also really would like to understand the way parents are feeling about what's going on in the school, about the teachers, about the staff, about the curriculum, about everything that's happening. And one of the things that I pride myself in is listening very well. So I'd really like to be the type of board member that goes out and has conversations and does focus groups with parents and understands what those concerns are. So that would be a big priority for me as well. But that educational experience that Abigail talked about for the kids, that's just got to be at the center of absolutely everything that the board does and considers. And it's, it's going to be a huge priority as well. And the budget, I think we'll talk about that in another questions.
Great. Thank you both for those thoughtful and thorough answers. Move on to question number two and we'll start with you, Paige. So the question is, public education serves all students from encompassing various beliefs, cultures, and values. How would you approach this diversity as a member of the Board of Education?
Okay, thanks. I want to start by saying the world is a diverse place. And it's, it's a diverse place for a reason. That's what makes this, makes this world so, so beautiful and so great. I do think that a child's educational experience needs to prepare him or her to be able to succeed in a very diverse world. And therefore, the curriculum needs to be diverse in nature and it needs to be frequently updated. I mean, history, especially now with technology and everything else that's going on, history is changing so quickly. And I think that's really why we have the need to be able to update that curriculum and, you know, quickly so that we can make sure that we're teaching these diverse topics. I think sheltering children, I think having a board that decides what is or is not taught, how it's taught, you know, forbidding certain topics is only going to continue to divide this unfortunately already very divided world. And if I can do anything in my power to make sure that that doesn't happen, that is very, very important to me. I'm very, very supportive of diversity and of diverse. If the parents and the community have a concern about a particular topic that they feel is, is a little bit touchy for school or maybe shouldn't be taught in school. Again, I would want to be the type of board that listens, that has people that come voice their opinion and that actually listens and truly takes that in and wants to do something about that to partner and to really be able to come to a decision that's best for the children and the parents are comfortable.
Thank you. Thank you, Paige. Abigail will move to you. I'll rephrase the question so we can hear it again and you can hear it again. Public education serves all students from encompassing various beliefs, cultures, and values. How would you approach this diversity as a member of the Board of Education?
Yeah, I first want to start off with like that, that's the beauty of public education is that every kid is welcomed in. And so my priority is once again, making sure that the kids are the focus and that they feel safe and supported through everything that they do. And so there are going to be moments where they are going to be challenged about their thinking and I want them to feel like they're in an environment where they feel safe to learn about things and build thoughts and beliefs about their, their views on the world. And school is an integral place for that. While they're having great conversations at home, they should be able to come to the safe place of school and see that not everyone thinks like me, but that's okay because that's what makes the world what it is. And that we're all here. We all get to come to this school, even though we all have different views and we all can have a safe and productive conversation about things that might be challenging. And so I think really thinking long-term, how do we equip our students to handle these things in the world? Handle the challenges of life, looking at how do we, when we're faced with challenges, how do we give our kids skills so that they can learn how to handle adversity and interact with other people and make responsible decisions? All of those things show that we're not making a whole bunch of the same type of kid. We're growing each kid to be their own unique individuals and that's so important. So just encouraging them to make sure that students in all scenarios feel safe and supported.
Thank you. Thank you both. Abigail, we'll stick with you. This is question number three. A key role of the Board of Education is to provide oversight to the district administrator directly and the Bristol staff indirectly. What experiences have you had that prepare you for this responsibility?
Yeah, so in my job, this is something that I navigate every day. Our school district and the district I work for creates the policies. And I live in a world where we have to learn how do those policies go into action in the classroom. And so really understanding like the board is making these overarching policies that really guide us. But when you step into the classroom, the board doesn't go into the classroom and say, you have to teach this thing this way. But know that we've set up a policy to empower you to do your work and that the administrators will monitor that because that's what we've entrusted them to do. So understanding that our role as the board is not to get into classrooms and criticize everything that's happening, but to trust the administrator that we've put into place to do their job and do it well. And when that does or does not happen, for that to be addressed by the school board. So really understanding that we need to take a backseat, knowing that the policies that we've put in place are really solid and setting everyone up for a successful experience.
Thank you. Paige, it'll be your turn. I want to rephrase the question so we can hear it and you can hear it. A key role of the Board of Education is to provide oversight to the district administrator directly and the Bristol staff indirectly. What experiences have you had that prepare you for this responsibility?
So my experiences include, as I said in my introduction, you know, I've been involved with Bristol School for well over seven years on the PTO. I met and worked with many of the individuals that we have on the staff now. And, you know, I think having built those relationships, it gives me a bit of an advantage to come in and really start right off the bat with some trust and with some rapport already built. I also think that my over 30 years roles in corporate with many levels of people, many levels of leader, providing coaching and guidance, partnering on solutions, that type of thing actually is similar. I mean, those are the types of relationships that you need to have, whether it's in a school or a company. So I do think that my 30-plus years in the corporate world has really helped me understand how to work with people most effectively. I do think that 15 years of being a parent is helpful in this case as well. I think, you know, that that really enables me to understand, truly understand the role of a parent and the concerns that parents do have with, with some of the things that go on at school and with the district administrator, with the staff, some of the questions that they have, what they'd like to hear more about. So that role as a parent has really also helped me kind of, you know, put myself in those shoes and understand what, what the community is looking for. You know, we're in a very unique situation right now with the board in that we are, the board right now is looking to hire a new district administrator. And I think it's going to be a phenomenal opportunity for whoever does sit on the board next to hire the right person in to get to know and build some really great relationships to onboard that person properly so that they understand what a fabulous place Bristol is and what, what great, what a great school they're coming into. So I do think that's going to be really, really important for the board to get, get aligned with that person and really start to build that relationship.
Thank you. Thank you both. We're going to move on to question four and Paige will stay with you on this one. In your view, what are the biggest challenges currently facing our school district? And how do you propose to address them?
So I'll actually stick on that last point that I was on. So probably the number one priority right now on a lot of people's minds, the board and the staff and the community included, is the hiring of the best possible district administrator. You know, we've, we've had some, some things happen in the past. We've unfortunately not had some solid people there for, for a good amount of time. And I think that the board really needs to try to focus and concentrate on getting the absolute best candidate into that role. Someone that truly cares about the school, about the children, about the staff, about the community. So that is, to me, that's kind of priority number one at this point. I really think that a fair, honest, and transparent board is necessary. I think that there's some challenges going on right now, as I already mentioned before. I think transparency is, is a really big, important topic right now. I will say that I was very interested to see that there was a quote on Tina and Victor's literature that said, requiring transparency between the citizens and the school board. But first and foremost, they're not here. I don't know that that really lends itself very well to transparency. I think if, if they were being transparent, fully transparent, as their literature says, they would be here tonight and answering these questions, just like Abigail and I are. And another interesting thing is Tina has decided for whatever reason to block Abigail and myself from her Facebook page. And again, I don't think that's a very fair, honest, and transparent way to go. So I, I personally think that a big challenge right now is that honesty and the transparency that everyone is really seeking. But getting back to the kids, making sure that the kids are always the number one priority. I mean, this is a school. It was about the kids. They have to be the number one priority in all of our minds for all the decisions that we're making. And that, that means all kids, inclusive of everyone, you know, no hidden agendas, no special kids, that sort of thing. And I'm, I'm also very big on revitalizing culture. You know, Abigail talked about the fact that they moved into Bristol because Bristol is a great school, is a great community. I think we need to get back to the culture that once was. And I think we're starting to drift away from that a little bit, especially in terms of how the teachers are feeling right now. That's, to me, that needs to be front and center. That needs to be our really, really big priority is really making sure that we're working with the teachers, that teachers are happy. If the teachers aren't happy, they're going to come to school and they're not going to do their best jobs and then the kids are going to suffer. So I really want to make sure that the teachers' concerns are addressed. And I think the other challenge for me is just a learning curve. And again, in my full transparency, I do have a bit of a learning curve to understand how the board works and, you know, the decisions and the policies and all that. I do have a challenge ahead of me to get up to speed with that and really to do the best I can and to learn as much as possible to get up to speed as a board member.
Thank you. Abigail, same question. In your view, what are the biggest challenges currently facing our school district? And how do you propose to address them?
Yeah, so I don't really want to call it a challenge because I truly feel like any moment is an opportunity and this is definitely one. And that would be, once again, to mirror a little bit to what Paige said, the hiring of the new district administrator. And so once that new district administrator is in place, how do, how does the board work together with that person to build a very strong partnership between the two groups, but then also including the teachers and the community? So that we are truly a collaborative group that's supportive of one another. We want the community to support the school. We want the school to support the community and the school board and the district administrator to be facilitators of that partnership and really being, how do we be collaborative? How do we be supportive of one another and how do we work so that everyone's successful? Because we don't want to get to a spot where we have to hire a new district administrator or we need to hire new teachers. We want everyone to be successful so that Bristol School is successful. So how do we make sure that from day one, we're in a good spot with everyone on the same page and talking about what are the strengths that each of these groups, the students, the teachers, the administrators and the community and the board bring to the table? And how can we pool all of those resources to make this the strongest partnership to move forward in a direction that everyone wants to see?
Thank you. And we'll stay with you for question number five. We're more than halfway through, only two more questions left before closing statements. But question number five, how do you plan to connect with students, parents, teachers, and other stakeholders to gather their input and make well-informed decisions?
Yep. So I think the, the biggest thing is to be present. That's why tonight it was such a priority for me to make sure I was here and available and had the opportunity to share who I am as a candidate because I want the community to know who I am and be able to make an informed choice and really just showing up. So board members, I feel like they just need to be around. They can't be someone who stays at home and isn't out at school events. So going out to school events, going out and talking to people in the community, being at community events, being at school events, and then just being proud to be a school board member and talk, talk to your people, the people in your community about the great things that your school is doing. A school board member should be a champion for the school that they serve. And so in every breath and everything that you do, you are proud to say that you are a member of Bristol School Board and you are proud of the things that Bristol School is doing. So I really just prioritize being present and visible and approachable in any scenario.
Thank you. Paige, same question. How do you plan to connect with students, parents, teachers, and other stakeholders to gather their input and make well-informed decisions?
So interestingly enough, this is actually what I do for a living. I'm in change management and a lot of times when you say that, people say, you're a, what? Do you change? What? So, you know, change managers, the profession is really to listen to people, to understand concerns, to understand who your stakeholders are, to involve them in solutions so that they're a part of the change and to really, you know, partner with them effectively. So, you know, what I do for a living, it's what I do 24/7. I think the, it's just a it's just essential for us to understand as a board who are the key stakeholders. Um, and how do we truly involve them um, in the decisions that we're making and, and what we're doing? Um, interestingly enough, I was at a, I was at a, um, an activity not too long ago where a, a parent had said, you know, I the Bristol community is, is a great community. And we, just like everyone always talks about, we're here for the kids. We want to do what's right for the kids. But interestingly enough, you know, I feel like some of the things that the board has been doing lately has been kind of not necessarily communicated the best. Um, I don't feel like I understand some of the things, the rationale, the reason, or even what's happening. And so, you know, in change management, we know that making sure people understand the why, not just the what we're doing, but why are we doing it and how are we doing it? And involving any kind of parents that want to come along for the ride and help out and things like that. So um, meeting people where they are, asking the right questions, speaking their language. Um, all of those things are things that, that again, I do in change management quite a bit. Um, and then just kind of remembering that, that the community, um, the teachers, the staff, everyone wants to, to be involved and wants to stay up to date. And so communication, I think, is just, um, is just critical in, in case. So, um, yeah, those are the things that I would definitely be doing.
Thank you. Thank you both. Um, this is our last question before we'll move on to closing statements. Um, and Paige will stick with you for this question. The past two years, Bristol had an operating referendum question on the ballot. What are your thoughts about the financial future of Bristol?
Okay. So i- if I had one wish, um, about what people could understand more in school situation, it's state. Um, I, I think state funding is very misunderstood. Um, and I actually have a, a statistic here I wanted to kind of throw out there to make people kind of understand what we're talking about here. So two-thirds of the four hundred and twenty-one districts in Wisconsin for the last two years have had to go to referendum. Two-thirds. And that's because the state legislature has been underfunding pre-K through twelve schools for fifteen years. We've just, the schools, public schools are not getting the budget they need to do what they need to do, to update curricula, to, to do all of those things. So the, the state formula just doesn't provide enough funds to operate the schools that they, the way that they need to be. And again, I think if, if people understood that a little bit better, they might understand what, why there's so many of these referenda and why they're going to continue happening unless, unless something changes. Um, if we had adequate state funding, you wouldn't be seeing this, this many of them. It's that common. It's that big of a problem. Um, and I do think that more referenda are going to continue to happen because of the situation. Um, I think this is a, this is a hot button. This, this whole finance and budget thing right now is very much a hot button. Um, I do, I, I found it very interesting that, that Tina had posted to her campaign page, and I think it was just today that she voted no for the referendum. I, I don't understand how a school board member who is supposed to be all about the school and very supportive of the school and all for the kids and that sort of thing can even fathom voting no for, for a school referendum and, and, you know, running around with vote no signs. I was actually part of the vote yes, um, team. Um, I worked very hard on the streets to, to try to help people understand why are we asking for this money? This is not misspending of money. Simply, you know, changing funds from one bucket to another to be able to spend on what we need to. Um, and so that's the situation that we're in right now. We're, we're going to need to do more of this. Um, and I know that Tina said in the last board meeting that, oh, the budget's fine, but guess what? Uh, there's a new roof that's going to need to be on pretty soon, roofing repairs. There are um, some, um, some new staff members that they're going to be proposing that, that are hired for, um, some interventionalist roles. Um, and all of these things are going to need funding. And so I believe that the board is going to propose to move some funds between buckets. And guess what? That's what the referendum wanted to do in the first place, that she voted no for. So I, I just, I think this is a, it's a huge priority. Um, I would hope that getting on the board and helping people understand this more and really focusing on where the money needs to go for the biggest priorities and for the right reasons is that what, uh, that's what I'm looking to.
Thank you. Abigail, we'll, uh, same question for you. The past two years, Bristol had an operating referendum question on the ballot. What are your thoughts about the financial future of Bristol?
Yeah, so I'm going to overlap a little bit with what Paige said, but really the first priority, um, in understanding financing, finance is as a board, we need to be educated about school finance because it isn't a business and it can't be run like one. Um, school funding has many places where we get our money first. Um, the state second, the federal government. Um, and then there's grants that come in for different reasons. So I think that the board having a really good understanding of what is school funding, where do we get those funds? Are those funds earmarked for certain things? Um, that's the first step, is having the best, clearest understanding of school finance as a whole. But then also recognizing these bigger problems that we are underfunded by the state. We have not kept up, kept up with the rate of inflation, um, which means our teachers' salaries are actually kind of moving backwards because they're not even ma- ma- matching the rate of inflation. And one of the things a school board can do is advocate at the state level, um, to ask for appropriate funding. And that's something that hasn't happened. And as a board, you can come forward and say, as Bristol School Board, we are asking the state to appropriately fund it. And that's one of the major roles of a school board is to be an advocate to the state for things that your schools need. Um, so once again, just really having a good understanding and knowing that that referendum that we did have that failed was not asking the taxpayers to pay more, but because we didn't have a full understanding of the fact that it was moving it from one fund source to another so that it could be utilized. Um, I think that's, that's a disappointment that we didn't have that clear communication, uh, from the board to the community, um, as a whole, that we, we weren't asking for more money. We were just asking to move it so we could us- utilize it. And there have been board meetings where they've talked about this money sitting there and they're like, why can't we use it? That's why we need to have a better understanding about school funding and how it does not function like a private bu- business. We are a public sector. Our funding works differently. We are not in the business of making money. We are in the per- we are in the business of building great citizens. And so, um, understanding that we have to invest in our future. It's not an expense. It's an investment so that our community can be stronger. So.
Thank you. Thank you both for, um, your thorough and thoughtful responses to all six of those questions. Um, we'll move on to closing statements and Abigail, we'll start with you and then we'll move to Paige. Um, just take please three to five minutes for your closing statement, and this can be anything important to you. Maybe it wasn't touched upon here, or any final remarks that you feel are important to leave with the voters.
First, I just want to say thank you. Um, I feel like we had such a great round, well-rounded set of questions that it really encapsulated um, my beliefs and my, my priorities as a school board candidate. Um, and for anyone who's on the webinar, thank you for taking the time to join and listen. Um, it, it's not easy to give up time to do these things, but it's important to be informed and make the best choice at the polls. And so I hope that um, tonight was an opportunity for you to get to know me as a candidate, um, and Paige as well, and that you can go to the polls with confidence, knowing what we would do as, um, school board candidates. I really just want to reiterate once again that Bristol is the strongest when we have a board, a district administrator, teachers, and a community that are working together. And we will truly accomplish great things when we are all collaborative and all working towards the, the same goal. And the board itself is its strongest when it has many experiences and perspectives. And so when we diversify our board and get people with lots of different backgrounds and lots of different input, we actually strengthen our board, which then strengthens the community as a whole. So I just want to say once again, I truly believe in the strength of Bristol School and how it impacts our community and builds a great community that everyone loves to be in, that families come back for generations to live in. Um, and so I'm proud to be part of a Bristol community and I am, would be grateful to serve as a school board member.
Well said. Thank you. Thank you. Um, Paige, if you wouldn't mind, just some closing, uh, a closing statement could be anything important to you, or maybe it wasn't touched upon here that you'd like to leave with our voters.
Sure. Thank you. So the, the few things that I would like people to remember about this call and remember about me is that, uh, once again, you know, transparency is, is who I am. What I always have been. I, I had a boss at work many, many years ago who told me that I wear my heart on my sleeve. And as much as I tried not to, this I'm, I'm, I'm just a humanly transparent, honest person, and I, I don't have any hidden agendas. I, I never have. I love Bristol School, even though I have, you know, no children there anymore. I'm so passionate about it. I'd love to still be a part of it. And I think being a, uh, board member would be a true honor, um, to be able to do, um, and, and really watch both students and teachers really grow at Bristol. Um, I am approachable. I love to listen. I love to talk to people and, and hear, um, hear concerns. Um, and I do think that a fair and balanced board is really the only way that we're going to move forward past some of these challenges that we're having right now. Um, and I think that, you know, a fair and balanced board needs to be just that, balanced. Um, I am willing and capable of listening to many different sides, um, purely because of my, my profession at work. Um, I am always willing to admit when I'm wrong, probably do that more than I probably should. Um, but a- and, and pivot, you know, for the success of the board and the students and the staff. Um, it, when, when there are better ways to do things, um, I'm always happy for listening that in. Um, I'm not afraid of change. Obviously, being in change management, I see a lot of it, but I think Bristol has so much wonderful legacy that we need to also honor that and, and really work to strengthen that as well. Um, I think that putting kids first, um, means local understanding of children's needs and not a nationwide agenda. And I want to, I want to reiterate that putting kids first is really understanding what our Bristol community is, what our Bristol kids need, and not what some nationwide group wants to, wants to kind of feed into us. Um, so if you all that are listening now feel that a, a fair and balanced board is needed, um, I think that your, your two votes that you have on April first for both Abigail and myself would go a, a very long way in getting, uh, a fair and balanced board um, and putting a stop to the majority that we have right now on the board. Um, and I would love for you to consider, um, both Abigail and myself as candidates of choice. Um, I do think that the future of Bristol depends on this. This is a very, very important election. So April first, that and April Fool's Day joke, get out there and vote. Um, and we really, really appreciate everyone who's been involved in this tonight. I know it's a lot of hard work. So Stephanie in the PTO, thank you. Courtney, thank you for hosting. And anyone who's listening in right now, thanks just for being here.
Thank you. Thank you both, um, for your time, your commitment to your community, and really for giving us your how and your why. I'll turn it over to Stephanie. Thank you.
Thank you so much again, um, Paige and Abigail for participating tonight and answering all those questions. And to Courtney, thank you so much for, um, moderating and coming and, um, being part of the Bristol community tonight. We're excited, um, to see you on here. So thank you very much. We appreciate um, your presence and help tonight. And thank you so much also to the community. Um, Bristol voters who are out there listening tonight or who will be listening in the future for this. Um, we will have a recorded link, um, that you can share with anybody who may have missed. Um, and I'll reiterate as well, voting is April first, as they said. Um, and then I just have a couple of PTO, uh, announcements, um, just to plug that in there at the end, but we'll have, um, oh, we have a PTO meeting tomorrow on Thursday in the school library. So you're more than welcome to attend at six PM. We welcome anybody who wants to learn more about the PTO, um, and just be part of it. So it's a great organization. So please join. Um, Friday, there is action territory. Um, you can, it should be nice outside, I believe. So the outdoors will hopefully be open. So get your family, get the kids and go have a fun time. Make sure you mention Bristol. Um, because part of that proceeds does go back to the PTO that we can use to, um, put on amazing events for the school. And then lastly is the dining, there's a dine at Lake George Lodge next week, Thursday and Friday. So once again, make sure to mention, um, Bristol, grab your friends and your family, go have a great dinner before spring break happens. So um, just wanted to, uh, mention all of that. But once again, thank you so much. We really appreciate you being part of this um, forum tonight and the participants and Courtney, and we just, um, are very grateful and, um, it's been a great night. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. Bye, everyone.
Bye.